Yeah.
We're not coming to you, he wasn't feeling good at all.
Yeah, he's not.
Yep. I talked to him last night. He sounded bad. Yes.
That's right.
He said, he said the way he felt, I was hoping back one late night. Yeah, we ran into them one day and didn't know this would be up for Jason and his family. We were coming from Minnesota, Rochester. We met him in Chicago, spent the night, saw the Cardinals that weekend. And then all of a sudden we run into Wade Cruz. Come down to Chicago.
All right, welcome everybody tonight for the invocation. We have Ray Malour with Christ Community Church. If everyone would please rise and bow your heads.
Dear Heavenly Father, we pause before the start of the city council meeting tonight to lift up our hearts to you in prayer and thanksgiving for your many blessings and mercies granted to us in the past as we seek your face, as we prepare to make plans to impact the future of this community. We pray that you give each one of us here present today the wisdom to discuss many important issues fully and to make our decisions wisely, to move forward in a way that brings you honor. We lift up every member of the board, city officials and employees, including our first responders, and ask that you continue to bless over them, Father, and every one of them, that they would seek your wisdom and guidance, courage and strength in all issues they deal with on a daily basis and areas that touch their lives and the lives of the people they serve. Keep us ever humble before your throne and give us the integrity to stand up for what we believe in and continue to act in the best interest of the city of Deco. So into your hands we place our trust in you to lead and guide this meeting tonight. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
All right, call meeting to order at 6:02. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Carnes.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz. Mayor Downs.
Here. Approval of minutes, motion and vote to approve regular meeting minutes from November 25th, 2024, if there are no concerns or questions.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Have no treasures report tonight, approval of bills to be paid, same thing here, if there are no questions or concerns, would entertain a motion and a second as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick and a second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. We have no proclamations on guests, we have one tonight, representatives from Fair Foods. Happy to have you guys here, come up to the lectern here and talk about what we're doing, what you're doing.
Good evening, my name is Bazzad Mark Adam. I got a handout, can I real quick pass it around? It's for the development of Fair Foods new headquarters.
Yeah.
My name is Bazzad Mark Adam, I'm with Harcourt Construction, we're at General Contract out of St. Louis. You're representing Fair Foods, Ron Porter and Trampus Porter. We're proposing on developing one of the parcels in the business park, which is roughly 10 acres, constructing a new headquarters for Fair Foods, which will be a 60,000 square foot freezer cooler facility with a 6,500 square foot office space. We're hoping to start design this January and have shovels in the ground come March, April of 2025. Our construction process is going to last roughly 10 to 12 months, depending on weather and materials, and looking forward to working with the city closely and the Porter family. Here to answer any questions regarding the development as needed. The handout we have is a rough site layout of the building, along with the rendering of the building as well.
Quite attractive.
Do you have some for Wade or?
Yes.
Happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions, or Ron, you're Trampus, or Laura wants to say anything too?
I think we've discussed it enough, some of them.
I don't have any questions, but it's a very attractive building.
Yeah.
Everybody knows exactly where it's going to go there.
Yes.
What we call is, well, it's a building across the street there, the Clayton Company.
Yeah. Yeah, MPP.
Straight from MPP.
Yeah.
MNB. Across the street from that, Big Jeff's done some tremendous work to convince us to do this, so, Kellen, you've done outstanding job. It's in your hands now, big guy.
Hey, we're here to help, happy to do it.
So, we're looking forward to it, things can make a beacon for our community.
Yes.
You know, we're excited to get this project rolling and hopefully we can encourage some other people that, you know, they might want to take a look at us and build their stuff next to ours, so we don't have the transportation cost back here and just take it right out of here, you know? So that's, that's the goal, is to hopefully we can bring some more stuff in town, let this just go along.
Yeah. Yeah, get a picture. Yeah, this has, this has been something we've been working on, Ron, since about a month after I took office, I think, so.
Yeah.
A little over a year and it's been a long time coming, we're excited and the investment that you guys are making is. It's a, it's a big investment for you guys and for the city, so we're.
That was early.
Yeah. We got there at all.
Can you, can you go through maybe some of the economic impact that the city will be looking at as far as jobs and what kind of investments going on here?
Sure, I believe the Porters have roughly 80 employees and 40, sorry, 46 employees and all those jobs are going to come from outside of Deco, which their current facility is located, to the city, so that adds 46 jobs to City of Deco. Economic impact is obviously, you know, the taxes are going to, the taxes that Fair Foods produces is going to come to the city. Ron, do you have more to add to this?
You know, obviously, we've resided in the village of St. John's for the past 40, 50 years, so by bringing those 46 current jobs across the street should make some impact to you guys. We're planning on adding six more, it's just kind of a, kind of a small minimum, what we've kind of figured that would also build into that. So, you know, you guys have been in this with me over and over, having some conversation. I mean, do I feel like there's going to be some significant economic impact? Yes, just going to have to get our, kind of get our feet dug into the ground a little bit and see what, what all we can continue to produce, but we've outgrown our facility. Our facility's been up here since 1974, we've added on, added on, added on, added on. This will give us a much better racetrack to bring our goods in, have them laid out properly and be able to hopefully grow our business beyond what we've, what we've got done over the last 40 years, so we're looking forward to that. So, to get down in the trenches of what all we're planning right now, six new jobs and bring the 46 of us over to Deco and get it out of St. John's.
Can you explain to the public, as everyone up here knows, but what does Fair Foods do?
We service the carnival amusement industry, we deliver corn dogs and turkey legs and phone cakes to various, I mean, to 6,500 events throughout about 42 states. Right out of this here, we have Beville Warehouse in Tampa, Florida, or Lakeland, now Florida, but that just basically takes care of about 26 events throughout the Florida season. But most, the majority of everything ships right out of here and goes as far as New Hampshire and as far west as, you know, sometimes Phoenix, Arizona, Salt Lake, Utah, all the way down to the valley of Mexico, all the way up to, you know, Bismarck, North Dakota, comes right out of here. Any other questions for us? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for supporting this, without you guys' support, we could have pulled this off.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody said it, but the other businesses seeing that something like that pop up in that industrial park, hopefully Jeff can be busy for the next couple of years bringing new businesses out there, so, thanks to Ron, Trampus and Laura for you guys' commitment to the city of Deco. Okay, next on appointments, had a motion and vote to hire a part-time police officer. I think.
I'd like to table that.
Okay. So again, a motion by Commissioner Ward to table this, got a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Have no consent or public agenda tonight, excuse me, ordinance is resolutions, ordinance 2024-011-01, ordinance levying taxes for corporate expenditures for FY25, and this is for final approval, is holdover from last meeting. If there are no questions or concerns, would entertain a motion and a second to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Ordinance 2024-011-02, ordinance levying taxes for the general obligation bond, this is for police and firefighters pensions for FY25, also for final approval. There are no questions or concerns, would entertain a motion and a second to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Epstein.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Ordinance 2024-011-03, ordinance levying taxes for library expenditures for FY25, and says for also for final approval, would entertain a motion and a second to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Ordinance 2024-012-01, as ordinance enacting the budget for FY '25. And this is for debate and public display. Would entertain a motion and a second to put this on public display for the next two weeks. Motion by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Resolution 2024-R12-01, resolution authorizing 2025 motor fuel tax expenditures for Illinois Department of Transportation. This is for final approval. Would entertain a motion and a second to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Resolution 2024-R12-02, resolution confirming meeting dates for calendar year 2025. Do you have that copy in front of you? There's only two changes, I think. Sorry. Only two changes for next year are Memorial Day. We won't meet on Memorial Day. We'll meet on Tuesday, the 27th in October. For Columbus, they'll meet on Tuesday, October 14th. Would entertain a motion and a second to approve that as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. And resolution 2024-R12-03, resolution authorizing sale of real property in the Decoine industrial park. This is for debate and public display. And I'm guessing Jeff, you got something to talk about with this?
Yeah, I'll do this one. This is a resolution for surplus sale of city property. It's accepting contract proposals for a piece of property in industrial park. They are due by noon on December 16th.
Any questions or concerns? If not, would entertain a motion and a second to approve that on, put it on public display. I'm sorry.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Resolution 2024-R12-04, resolution authorizing a TIF agreement with RLTJ LLC. And this is also for debate and public display. Jeff? Want to talk about the TIF agreement?
Josh, look back up to the resolution on the authorizing sale of real property in Decoine. That needs to be for final approval because we're just accepting contract proposals. So there's no debate and public display for that.
Okay. All right. So for resolution 2024-R12-03, let's redo that for final approval. Get a motion and a second. So moved. Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. All right, on to R12-04.
Sophisticated TIF agreement. We've worked on it for a long time. Brought to conclusion with the help of the city attorney. It's a TIF, the total project cost, according to our information, is $12 million around this building. The TIF agreement is $750,000 with the possibility of going to $1 million, depending on how the property taxed to generate. And it runs through the end of the existing life of TIF number two. This is a standard TIF deal. This is very similar to everything else we do. It's just the numbers are bigger. And I also want to professionally say to them, thank you for investing in this community. This is just a wonderful investment and it's substantially larger than they said it was up here. This is a big deal. And the site plan, guys, is beautiful. The site plan is gorgeous. The building elevation is beautiful. There's, there's an agreement inside this TIF agreement, which, which you should be able to read. It says that should we not be able to hit those, those targets during the remaining life of the TIF? It will carry, we're agreeing that we'll continue to try and extend the life of the TIF. And if that doesn't, if we're not successful with that, that we will create, we will create a new TIF for the industrial park moving forward. So, and then we'll, we'll fulfill our obligations at that point. All of our projections are is that we should be able to fulfill these obligations during the remaining life of this TIF. And we also will have some money in the TIF program and leftover for others. So we're not, we're not spending all of the money here on, on TIF, but primarily the, the money that's being generated by this building plus some additional money in the TIF program is what's going to pay for our obligations. So we're just revolving the money around. Questions? Got to hit everything, Kalen?
Yes.
Hillary, sit down. Okay.
There are no questions from anybody. Would entertain a motion and a second to put that on public display as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Okay, on other business, we're going to have a special meeting next Monday at 6 o'clock, December 16th. Kalen, exactly what is it? What are we doing again?
It's to do with the timing of this project and some of the legal requirements we got to meet, that we have to do these successive meetings in a row here. There will be a few things on the agenda in relation to this project at the next meeting and then we'll have the regular meeting the following Monday again.
Yeah. Yeah, so next Monday we'll only deal with, with this project.
What time will you do that meeting?
Six.
Six.
Yeah. You just have to post the agenda like normal, 48 hours advance and send, send it to Pete too. Okay, so we'll have that ready for this week. All right, Commissioner's comments. Kalen?
Nothing from me.
I just want to say kudos to everybody on working on this project and thanks to the Porter family for their investment and I'm very excited to see this project get rolling.
Yeah. Mike?
I want to congratulate Sam Gibson. He just graduated from the Police Training Institute. He's our newest police officer. He's going to go through an FTO program for a few months and so it's, and get our numbers back up to where it needs to be. I want to thank everybody that worked on that Christmas parade. I just absolutely love that parade. They did an excellent job on that. And I want to thank the Porters for moving into town. Ronnie, I won't say how many years because I tell our age, but we've known each other since kindergarten and known Laura since, like, huh?
Very first day.
Yep, yep, yep. Forty years of knowing Laura. Why am I getting to telling your age though?
It's okay to do that to Ron, not to that. It's okay to do that to Ron.
But they're just great people. They are very active in our community, donations, volunteering and everything. And it's great. I've not heard anyone ever complaining about working for the Porter family. That's just how great a business that they run. I mean, they're just great people and I'm glad, real excited that they are moving into the city lanes up in our industrial park. Just thanks to all the citizens and all the employees, commissioners for all you do. God bless.
Thanks, Mike.
Jill?
Yeah, ditto. Thanks for the Porters for staying here and all you do and have done for Decoine. And Laura, you know, you're my favorite, so.
Coach?
I'm just glad you're making that plural, Porters. I give Ronnie all the credit because I know how that goes. If I would have listened to my wife after ballgames, I would have never lost a game if I had done what you thought I should have done. So I know how that works, so I'm going to give her credit. But thank, thank you, Porters. Ronnie, I've, I've known you a long time. I remember your dad going up to St. Louis for two or three days a week in the halls and all. Started back. So thank you and this, this is beautiful, guys. Beautiful.
Ruth?
Yeah, thanks for choosing Decoine. Your building is phenomenal. I think it will draw some other people to Decoine, I hope. And thank you to the administration that got this done too. I know it wasn't easy for you guys and everybody to come into agreement, but we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, thank you again. You know, I've said it to you in private and in public too. So we appreciate you guys being here and for the next 45 years, right, Trampus? Yeah, congratulations.
Did what? I think you locked me down now.
No, I did. Yeah, I got you now. Congratulations, as, as Mike said, and we've got Officer Gibson in the house tonight. So his first taste of the city council meeting, so welcome. Look forward to you being part of the team. You know, had a successful Christmas parade, as Mike said, and attendance was down a little bit because of the snow, but I thought it made for a really good scene for the people that were there. So holiday lights is going strong. They said they had 400 cars Saturday night, which is a ton of people. So, you know, the next two weekends it continues. And I was out there last night and, and it's beautiful. City workers did a good job. Tourists did a good job. Everybody did a fantastic job promoting that event. So had a good small business Saturday two weeks ago now. And Dane Mason's event over the weekend was good. Cozy Christmas. Downtown is packed Friday night and Saturday night. So, you know, I even got roped into frying some donuts Saturday night. The video will be posted on Facebook at some point, I'm sure. So yeah, it's been a good, good holiday season, start to the holiday season and coming up on Christmas. So we will be back next Monday for a short meeting and then 23rd for our regular meeting. Anybody in the crowd?
I think I forgot to mention, you know, as the public has seen, we've started now on Hickory Street. You can see visible progress on that. That's been a long time coming. When we first came into these positions, Department of Transportation gave us about two weeks and told us that we had to come up with $2.5 million. Hats off to Mayor Downs for finding it without a taxpayer penny being used from the city. Between that, Prismian, and now Porters, we're off to a pretty good start here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. Appreciate it. And it's not everybody. It's, it's everybody, not just me. Okay, anybody in the crowd? No? Don't think we have executive session, do we? No, Ruth?
No.
Okay. With that, would entertain a motion to adjourn at 6:24?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Someone.
Oh, they want to stick around.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Playing hard to get.
I've never known you guys don't want to stick around.